Very good. I'll go ahead and open up the meeting anyhow. Good evening and welcome to the zoning part of the Knox County Commission and meeting cycle for the month of April. Tonight, we, this is an extension of the first meeting, so I guess technically this really is not a separate meeting, although we did have a, a brief recess while we had to log back into the separate Zoom meeting. You're watching this meeting back home, which probably most of you are. Just explain a couple of things logistically. One reason why, if you're wondering why we had to do two separate Zoom meetings, if you through your family or business, or for any reason you've been doing Zoom, you realize that there's sort of a lot of folks that lock in and you have different waiting rooms to kind of manage all the folks that are participants. And when you look at a county commission meeting, there's a whole bunch of folks that had to be part of the county commission meeting. And all of those folks had absolutely nothing to do with all the folks here, here for this part of the meeting, which is based on evaluating and take a look at land use matters and zoning matters. So that's why we had to put kind of a hard close to the last one and then open up this new Zoom and begin the second meeting. But if you're truly just watching on CTV, then it's probably the same feed. And it should be relatively seamless. So another couple of points of clarification. We have got, this is a catch-up meeting. March, when all of the, the crisis-related stuff just hit, we didn't know exactly where things were going to land. So in my opinion, it was in our best interest to go ahead and cancel the meeting and postpone it. We, we got through the first Zoom meeting and now I think we've frankly, all of us collectively are a lot better at doing this. So it felt like we could finally open it back up to more zooming and to a larger type of venue. So that's why we're here, but because of not having the meeting in March, we've now sort of got a double-sized agenda this month. And when we were putting the agenda together, we tried to stack it in order so that, you know, towards the end of the agenda, that's when we're going to be handling the things that were originally scheduled for April. And can y'all hear the dog barking in the background? Okay, somebody's at the front door. He's going crazy. So, so if, so that's a kind of a reason why how some of the agenda got set. It's, by the way, the dog's name is Spanky and I'll be sure and maybe share a picture with y'all later of him. So, but with all that said, we'll go ahead and begin on the tonight's agenda. When we set the original zone, agenda at the top of the, the opening of the meeting, to be noted that item number 40 is deferred and all the commissioners received communication about that in advance in the meeting. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the, the next item on the agenda?
Roll.
Oh, we do need to call roll. Yeah, we can do another roll call, please. Yeah, go ahead, Madam Clerk, call roll and then open with the next item, first item.
Commissioner Gill.
Present.
Commissioner Carringer.
Present.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith. I can't hear you, but I see you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Nystrom.
Here.
Commissioner Schoenmaker.
Here.
Commissioner Anders.
Here.
Commissioner Bustler.
Here.
Commissioner Beeler.
Here.
Commissioner Daley.
Here.
Commissioner Jay.
Here.
Commissioner Biggs. All members are present.
All right, very good. Thank you. Another point of clarification before frankly, the dogs sort of threw me off a little bit is we, you know, the direction in the announcement for the meeting as well as what's, what's on the agenda on, on these land use issues. If we receive some feedback from someone who is in opposition to any of these land use issues, I've directed Drusilla to reach out to them so that we can have a point, counterpoint at this meeting. So in that case, we really frankly, I think we only had one item that drew some opposition. Otherwise, most of the, the agenda items that came to us really did not have a whole lot of opposition to them and most came to us on from either consent or unanimous votes, but we've done our best to make sure that if there is any opposition that they all get, are heard tonight. And I believe everybody who has received zoning, or excuse me, it's hard to say zoning Zooms, but everybody has received a link to the Zoom that had a matter or wanted to speak out on a zoning matter. So with that said, we'll now open up to the first item. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes, Commissioner Schoenmaker.
Daniel Sanders had his hand up Law Director's office.
All right, I'll go ahead and sorry about that. I'm been, he may have been down towards the bar. All right, there he is. All right, go ahead, Mr. Sanders.
Just one item of housekeeping before we get going on the first item. There is a commission rule that requires the attendance of the applicant. The governor's executive order 16 gave us authority to suspend that rule. I don't know if the applicants have all received the Zoom link and are in attendance. I know there are a couple. But just out of the abundance of caution, it maybe, I would, I would advise you to take a vote and suspend its rule seven, section F of the commission rules.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Jay. Is there a second?
Second, Justin Biggs.
Second from Commissioner Biggs. So to restate what we're voting on is we have a rule that we operate on that states that any applicant has to be present and that rule, we, we want to make sure that we've done away with that rule so we, that rule so we can be a full compliance and make it just frankly more seamless and easy, comply with the governor's order. That is what we're voting on. Madam Clerk, before I have the vote, Commissioner Anders, or did you, you've got a question or a statement? All right, Commissioner Anders, you're recognized. All right.
More of a statement. I think that if we look at, if some of the applicants are not here and we proceed forward and this through error or they didn't submit to be taken off the list, or we need to have on the, on the back end of this, we need to have remedy for them if something was done without their presence. I think that we as a county and an MPC ought to act in accordance to that because they may have thought this was over and done with. And if there's not a, if an applicant's not here, I don't want to change their property without their permission and consent. And I know that there's an application, but we need to have a remedy for that on the other side.
Well, what would that be? I mean, would that be kind of, for lack of a better word, and Daniel can weigh in on this. And then, by the way, I'm recognizing your statement. I've got a Daniel and then I'm going to go back to Commissioner Smith who's got his light on. I'm not sure what the, the proper remedy would be. Otherwise, it could be, I'm just throwing this out there. We, anything that's passed where an applicant is not present, it maybe does not go into effect for another month so that we have time to circle back to them. I'm not sure if that would, would make sure. And then we can remedy it at the next commission meeting. I'll direct that to the Law Department, Mr. Sanders. And then we've got Commissioner Smith, he's got his light on.
If you do not suspend the rule, you, you will continue to operate under the rule. And if an applicant is not present at the meeting, then the application will kick to the heels of the meeting. And then if they're not here the second time, the application is, is read into the, read into the meeting, then it will be deferred automatically.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm just saying if, if we pass something and somebody's not here, I'm okay with suspending the rules. But if we, we, we need to allow them a free opportunity, we need to send them a certified letter, do something, allow them a free opportunity to come back and say, this is not what I consented to, I wasn't there.
I would, I would almost say, sorry, just a second, Commissioner Smith. You know, if we get to somebody and they're not here, I suspect that somebody in the planning office has probably got all their contact information and can also call them too, just to see if they got the links. I mean, we, we sent all links out based on the email addresses that we had. Commissioner Smith.
I guess this question is for Gerald Green. It's my understanding that even if we take action, the applicant still has to sign off on the action we have taken. Is that true, Mr. Green?
Not that I'm aware of, sir. The commission action is final unless it's appealed to the courts. And that's probably a better question for Mr. Sanders. But in looking at the applications, I, well, first let me say, I think the safe way in response to Commissioner Anders' request is not to waive the rule so that they're notified if they're not here. But every request coming to you, the recommendation from the Planning Commission is what the applicant requested.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Beeler, then we may go back to Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess this is a, I don't know if this is a point of order, but just perusing the agenda in my screen, I do believe every applicant is present.
Well, that's good. So, you know, when we get to one, if, if they're not present, we can deal with it at that time. We can handle it in a way like a meeting and put it to the back and give a chance to see if they missed the link or something. And then we'll, we'll handle it again. And we can let the, the Planning Commission weigh in on it. If we want to put it off the next month, I think we just handle every one. I don't want to say case by case. We got to be consistent in our rules, but yeah, I don't have a problem moving them, even if we waive the rule tonight, but then we still, just as a matter of the way we handle it, we can still, we can waive the rule and make it efficient. But then we can, when we actually handle, if someone's not here, we can still push it forward to next month if that's how we so choose to. That might be a way to, to do both. So anyhow, that's, that's my take. So we've got, has there been a motion in a second on this about the, the rule wave? I don't believe we've had a, Daniel was, all right, have we got the motion? Who made the motion in the second? All right, we have Commissioner Anderson, was that Biggs? So, okay. We do need to have a vote on that, or excuse me, Commissioner Jay and Biggs. All right. All right, y'all are pointing at, it's like trying to figure out who's on the Brady Bunch or whatever. So, but motion is properly before us. And Madam Clerk, if you could please have a roll call.
Starting with Commissioner Biggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nystrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nystrom votes aye. Commissioner Schoenmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoenmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders? Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Thank you. That passes. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the first item on our agenda?
So, resolution, I'm sorry.
I think it's number 41.
Item number 41 is two dash A dash two zero dash RZ, request of Joseph Nocov and Steve Lentz for rezoning from A agricultural to RA low-density residential properties located at 3417 Stamps Lane, parcel ID 56 PA 01201, Commission District 7.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Is the applicant present? All right, if the applicant's present, if you could, you turn on your microphone so we can hear you. That should be Joe or Steve? Or their attorney?
I think I may have missed the first item, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll move that one to the back of the agenda. And Mr. Green, the, are, are you the only one from the Planning Commission here at this meeting? I'm just wondering if we've got anybody who can pull that one up and try to do a little bit of bird dogging on it?
I'm the only one here, sir.
Okay. Drusilla, or if you could take a look at this one and just see if you can look them up on that one off of our agenda and information on the application, see if we could find a number to call them. And then if we could get ahold of them, we can, you know, set, we'll find out where they are, make sure they've got the link. But we'll put that one to the back of the agenda. Okay?
We'll do.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, 42.
It's two dash A, I'm sorry, two dash D dash two zero dash RZ, request of Scott Davis, Masana Investments LLC for rezoning from A agricultural to PR plant residential zoning up to five dwelling units per acre. Properties located at 7711 Thompson School Road, parcel ID 20158.01, Commission District 8.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Green, if you could, and by the way, I've, I've heard, is there any opposition present?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Thompson. Okay, Mr. Green, if you could kind of introduce this proposal to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Recommended to approve the PR plant residential zoning with up to five dwelling units an acre by vote of eight to three. Found that the zoning would be, listen with the Northeast County Sector Plans LDR designation as appropriate, given the proximity of the site to give schools and that their development in the area. The Planning Commission did receive comments from the neighboring residents with concerns about traffic impact on the character of the community. Request our email from the Jim Snowden Director of Public Works and Engineering addressing the road capacity in the area.
All right, thank you. Mr. Green, do you have anything else?
That's all, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. Before we, Chair recognizes that we've got both the applicant present and there is some opposition on this one. You know, we can't get a motion on a table, but just for this one, I prepared, I'd like to give each side of this subject about eight minutes on the, the front end to talk about their, their case. And then much, I'm going to do my best to make this just like a regular commission meeting. So I do want to give you eight minutes on the front end when we do this, but I'm also going to look for a motion first before we, if we want to go in. I know these, this is very different, but I do want to get a, a statement first at each side. But go ahead, Mr. Green, or excuse me, I've got Richie Beeler's hand is up and Mr. Green, I think your, your, your circle lit up. So I wasn't sure if you were trying to say something.
Did you recognize me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I was checking on Gerald Green, but Commissioner Beeler, you're recognized.
Thank you. Just because of the nature of this and the, the extent of the opposition and, and all of the commissioners have heard and received emails, respectfully, I would prefer being the district commissioner to wait to hear from both sides and give commissioner opportunity to ask questions before making any kind of a motion.
All right, very good. Okay, well, the chair will recognize the applicant, Mr. Davis. Let me see if I've got any other hands up. No, I don't. But the, the chair recognizes, excuse me, Mr. Daley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, is it possible to put those on video, Zach, so we can see Mr. Davis and Mr. Thompson?
Chair has no problem with that.
Yeah, I've, I've sent the request. There's one, okay. And there you go.
I just want to know where Chairman Nystrom borrowed all those degrees.
Sorry about that. My internet blinked out for a second ago. I'm sorry. It looks like Zach has got that fixed. So we've got a live version of Mr. Davis. And is Mr. Thompson available? I see, okay, he's in there. Wow, that's got to be a background, right?
That's actually our farm, yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay. Well, I thought it was getting dark. Okay, okay.
It's a little lighter here.
Okay, got it. All right. Well, well, Mr. Davis, what I'd like to do, as I mentioned, I'd like to give each side on the front end eight minutes just to kind of talk about what you're proposing. And Mr. Davis, as the applicant, I'll, you know, I'll give you the option to go first.
Thank you, sir. I'll yield to the opposition.
Okay, all right. Mr. Thompson, the floor is yours. And if I might ask the clerk, I'll do my best, but if someone could kind of keep track of the, the time on this. Have you got a stopwatch or something? Get one going here on my phone. All right. Ms. Ellis, I haven't heard from you. I'm going to go ahead and go ahead and start, just try to do it close. Right now is 7:20 and I'll go ahead and let you go till approximately 7:28, but I'm not going to be right it that hard. So you got approximately eight minutes. You're, you're on, Ms. Thompson.
Okay. Okay, sorry, I was working on this. Okay. Yeah, and so, no, thanks for, for allowing us to, to speak. Obviously, it's, it's a little different. Zoom, yeah, this is a better background than my office, I promise. But no, back in February, I guess is when this was first seen with MPC. It was, it was proposed and yes, it was approved by MPC, it was supported by the staff. It passed by an eight, three vote. It wasn't, it wasn't unanimous. The three that voted no didn't want to postpone it. And just for form, just for more discussion, because there were 42, 43 pages worth of community input on this. And so what we're, what we're asking is nothing out of the ordinary of what's already here, the three and a half dwelling units per acre. That's what all the, the other three subdivisions on Thompson School Road within a mile have been developed out to. And, and so when they were, this was approved at five dwelling units per acre, we just see that is too high a density for this particular plot of land. It's on Thompson School Road. There's not been any improvements to Thompson School Road. There are, there's currently construction at Thompson School and Emery Road. But what all that's doing is matching it with Fairview because there were too many accidents, too many people. I ran into that, went, ran into that problem on Emery. So that's just a safety concern at Thompson School. Emery Thompson School Road itself has not been improved. The other issue we're running into, just it's a broader issue is the connectivity of this area. Yes, it's in a planned growth area. However, there's not been any infrastructure, there's not been any connectivity improvements done to this area to facilitate that growth. And so going to twelve, five dwelling units per acre is much higher than what this area can withstand with the current infrastructure we have. The, if you look at Google Maps and I'm, I'm, I know we, we sent you all a, a PDF with the image of Google Maps showing where actually taking Thompson School Road to Carnes Road to Barker over to Tazewell is a faster route to get to the schools because yes, we do have Gibbs and, and elementary, high and, and the middle schools in one location, but taking Carnes Road, which some folks have even called a pig bath, which is basically all it is, to get to the schools is a faster route than taking Thompson School to Emery. And so once folks realize that and you have congestion at a Thompson School Road, Emery Road intersection, you have congestion at a Tazewell Pike, Emery Road intersection with the traffic light going to schools, it'd be much more, I guess, user-friendly for the area just to skip through Carnes Road. Well, in, during this construction at Emery and Thompson School, it was shut down. So everybody in these three subdivisions and beyond had to take Carnes Road if they're going to get to the schools or Tazewell Pike to head towards Fountain City or Halls. And so the residents on Carnes Road, I know most of you are not members of the Corning Connection Facebook page and all that, but those residents were constantly complaining about the traffic and the safety and they were tearing up their driveways, they're tearing up their yards because there's not enough room for two cars to pass. It's not a lined road. It's not wide enough for that. And so that's the connectivity issue we're running into there. And there's only one access point to this development. You can't, there's not a, a back road connectivity to it. The access point is on Thompson School Road. The only access point looking at the proposed, I guess, development plans would be an access point in the back of Wheat Meadows connecting subdivision. However, its only access point is also on Thompson School Road. So then you're, you're, you're hitting it either way. And that's what we're, that's what we're running into. And I know that we have, you know, the new middle school, elementary school is fairly new. But even still, you know, these are, they'll, let's see, I've got it here, according to Knox County Schools, you know, the high school is at 81% capacity. Gibbs Middle is, obviously it's newer, it's only at 60%. Or, or the elementary school is at 90% capacity and they just added their seventh, fourth grade classroom, obviously before schools were canceled for the rest of the year, but they had to add a seventh, fourth grade classroom. So we're already starting to stretch the limit of what our air infrastructure and I guess amenities for the community are. We don't have sidewalks. We don't have bike paths. We have the Ruudton Park. We have the Gibbs Elementary School Playground. But kids are playing in the streets of subdivisions because they can't get to them. And our subdivisions don't have parks, playgrounds, sidewalks. We don't have any, any of that. So during this shutdown where school's out, I mean, I've got kids playing in our subdivision of down the road and they have no place else to play because they can't get to any of it. So that's what we're running into with that. I think overall, we would like to see, we, we know development's coming. And so what we do here sets a precedent on what we do moving forward. You know, what are we just going to, a developer shows up and says, hey, I want this, it's, it fits within the planned growth guidelines. MPC staff says, okay, let's do it. And MPC Commission approves it and they just get it. Or do we actually have a conversation with the developers and developers come to us and say, okay, this is, we, we understand this is your limitations. But what we, you know, if we just rubber stamp everything that comes across with no plan of how we move forward, then it's just going to be hodgepodge mess of whatever we get. And then once the development is in place, we have to live with it. And not only do we have to live with it, the new residents who've moved in, because at five dwelling units per acre, you're talking about 190 plus units. Now those residents who are sold, a wonderful community. Everything's here. You've got a grocery store, gas stations, all the amenities you need right here. But once they get here, now it's cramped. They can't get anywhere. Traffic's bad. And then there's nothing for their kids to do. So we're just trying to, we would love to have a conversation, how we move forward. And as commissioners, we're asking you all to really look hard at this, at this idea of, of, you know, how do we plan to move forward? Instead of just saying, yep, you know, we had this application come through. If it's in the, in the mold, let's just do it. And so we would like to have that conversation. And so, yeah. That's, that's really, that's really where we're at on this, particularly for this development. Carnes Road is a, as a, as a back road access point for this to get to the schools is just not feasible. It's not safe. It's not feasible. And it doesn't do the residents on Carnes or Barker Road any favors. So that's, that's where we are. Thank you.
All right, thank you. But the chair recognizes Mr. Davis.
No, and thank you all for your time and thank you, Mr. Thompson, for your input there. And I think, you know, NBC approved five units an acre, and I think the residents are asking for 3.5 units an acre. And I'm willing to compromise and meet them in the middle. And so if it's incumbent upon the, you know, the commission here, I would agree to the 4.25 units per acre and reduce it down to 4.25 if everybody's comfortable with that.
Okay. I'm open to having some further questions and some follow-up on it before we entertain a motion on this. Will let's go, I want to, let me pull up my screen here so I can try to track any questions. All right. First of all, the chair recognizes we've had Commissioner Daley and Commissioner Anders and then Commissioner Jay. So Commissioner Daley first.
Well, yeah, I was going to tell you, I had the timer going, but Mr. Thompson's got one minute and 10 seconds left.
Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. Thompson, you can keep going unless you've got your, wanted to say some more. I mean, I'm trying to break, I'm trying to be as flexible as possible with this, just within some general guidelines, knowing how awkward it is doing this through Zoom. So.
Mr. Chairman, Kevin Murphy is also here. I could speak for about a minute.
Okay, all right, Mr. Murphy, you're recognized. If you'd like to speak for about a, a minute or so, or two.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I do have video available if you'd like to turn that on. So this area is an area in the Northeast County Sector Plan that's called out as a special use mixed district area. It's a, it's, so this is an area that's, we've actually identified and we've said, yes, you know, through the planning process, this is an area we want to grow. Recommendations called, you know, it has some, you know, we've had, done some infrastructure improvements. So we've had schools, that's, that's. Recommendations called, you know, it has some, you know, we've had, done some infrastructure improvements, so we've had schools, that's, that's good, that's, usually, we're fighting that here. But we really need to actually figure out, you know, how do you grow a community like Gibbs that's out, you know, on the edge of the rural area that, you know, has these transit links back into the rest of the county? That actually needs to grow employment because the residents there primarily don't work in that area, they have to commute. And that doesn't have any pedestrian connectors. It's really quite a shame that, you know, there's, the only sidewalk that's there connects Gibbs Middle, Gibbs Elementary, and the Exxon Gas Station, and that's the only sidewalk in the community. So there's, so really, I think the reason the community's up, you know, saying, please slow this request down, is because there is some infrastructure improvement that needs to happen to help build this community, and this is the opportunity to, to bring it up, to maybe start the small area plan for out there and figure out how to do these better. But for, for now, you know, maybe we're, maybe new development out there is a little bit ahead of the, you know, the cart for the horse. Because, you know, it's, we haven't quite got our plan together yet out there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll go, Chair recognizes Commissioner Anders.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Davis, you said the four-point-two-five, what's the difference in the, the house numbers on, the number of houses on that?
I believe it's twenty, well, I can't, the total number of acreage, Mr. Green, you probably have that in front of you.
Yes, sir, the total acreage is forty-three acres, so that's about three-quarters of a unit per acre, so about thirty, difference is about thirty units.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I think when we talk about this area, we've, you know, there's been opportunity, employment opportunity out there, and the community turned it down with Hackney. There's been a request for schools, so fifteen, sixteen years ago, we built the elementary school. Just a couple of years ago, we've added a middle school back to the community, which it very much deserved. The state has spent millions of dollars, tons of time and effort on Tazewell Pike and Emery Road. I mean, there have been infrastructure increases up there, and it's just like the rest of the part of the counties that, you know, my road is a car and a half. They're just, they're all over the county, and if we talked about raising the revenue to get all that done, there'd be just as much discussion against that, too. So, you know, my area, Harden Valley, we wanted to take a four-lane road all the way from Pelosi to Watt Road, and the community said, stop at Steel Road. Now they're upset that there's not more infrastructure out there. So I mean, all these decisions that we try to make, we can't seem to make everybody happy from one decade to the next.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Anders, your light's still on, are you good? Are you done? All right, Commissioner Jay, then Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to hear from Jim Snowden if there were any infrastructure improvements or anything slated for Thompson Station Road in, anytime in the next decade.
No, Commissioner, there, there are not. The email I'd sent you guys previously kind of looked upon our crash analysis out there. We're not seeing any crashes at that location that would justify the expenditure of funds at this point in time. It's, crashes below statewide average for a similar characteristic road in regard to width and alignment. So from my perspective, we don't see any improvements in the near-term future.
Tell you what, I, I might follow up on that. Commissioner Jay, would you like Commissioner Snowden to, I mean, I've got a copy of his email that he sent us when I first had this question, I guess, late Sunday.
I had that, I had that, I just didn't know if there was any.
I'm just wondering if we want to read that into the record, you know, just for the benefit of, you know, some of the neighbors and other folks who may be watching, it's kind of my, my intent with that. And what I can do is I'll, I'll go ahead and take that right now, if you do, if you guys don't mind, then I'll get back to Commissioner Smith. But, let's see, Mr. Snowden sent this out this afternoon, just a hair before two o'clock. Commissioners, Chairman Nystrum has received several emails. To be clear, I know the commissioner's got this email, I'm sending this more for the, the record and anybody else who might be tuning in. Chairman Nystrum has received several emails regarding the noted rezoning item and asked that I provide some background. In summary, this rezoning was approved by an eight-three vote over the Planning Commission on February twenty, but it's not that long. An eight-three vote of the Planning Commission with a staff recommendation of five per acre. Developer has since submitted his concept plan, which will be heard in May, for a hundred and eighty-five lots at four point, at forty-three acres, built for a density of four-point-two-two an acre. The proposed subdivision will have two entrances, the new one on Thompson's School, and one through a road sub into the Wheat Meadows subdivision, which I believe Mr. Thompson had mentioned earlier. We reviewed the traffic, we reviewed the applicant's traffic impact letter and concur with their analysis, which states that the adjoining road network is adequate to accommodate the proposed traffic. For example, Thompson Road, Thompson School Road is a twenty-feet major collector with center and edge line markings. Our latest strategic plan ranked Thompson School Road three-hundred-and-thirty-two out of five-hundred-and-fifty-seven studied roads with a crash rate of point-four-oh-one or forty percent of the statewide average for a similar characteristic roadway. Example, T-Dotton County routinely don't program improvements until that number is over one. We also examined constituents' concerns of diverted traffic using Karnes and Barker Roads to access the Gibbs schools. We concur, these roads are narrow and have sharp curves, which we believe will serve as a deterrent for through traffic, as well as act as a natural calming effect. In addition, the soon-to-be completed intersection improvements at Emery Road and Thompson School Road will include turn lanes and a traffic signal. Therefore, it's our professional opinion, the traffic will follow the most convenient path, and we believe the noted constraints on Karnes, Barker, plus the more convenient traffic conditions, signals at Emery and Thompson School and Emery-Tazewell will serve to lessen the potential of negatively impacting these roads and residents. Hope that helps, please feel free to ask me questions at the meeting. So anyhow, that was, I know you got that, but I just wanted to kind of read that into the record. Now, the, the chair recognize, now Commissioner Jay, you've still got the floor, and Commissioner Smith, I noticed your light is no longer on. Go ahead, Commissioner Jay.
Thank you very much, I just, I had one other question for Director Green. I'm looking at the KJMS maps, and everything around this area, it sees one to three, five, one to four, one to four, up to four, I mean, everything I'm seeing is up to four. The opposition said everything is at three-point-five, but I see a whole lot of four as well. Am I missing something, or is it just a bit of an assortment there along?
No, they, they were zoned for four, but they were, they were developed out to about three-point-five.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioner Jay, all right, you're done, all right, Mr. Beeler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do, I do have one question that I wanted to kind of begin my, my comments with, and this may be to Director Green. Mr. Chairman, you may know the answer to this, to how many of the members of the Planning Commission are residents of the Eighth District?
This is, Gerald Green, I don't believe that any of them, any of the current members are residents of the Eighth District.
Okay, thank you, Director Green. You know, th, this is kind of unbelievable to me. That, now, now I understand that the Planning Commission is not appointed by district. But it is appalling to me that there are zero members of the Planning Commission that reside in the Eighth District, especially given the fact that the Eighth District is approximately one-third of the landmass of Knox County, and probably contains the majority of the remaining developable land in Knox County. I think this is a great injustice, and I think it's something that needs to be remedied as soon as it possibly can. You know, ha, having said that, if, if you will permit me to use an Eighth District word, this one's a booger. You know, I, I looked at my, my colleague, Commissioner Anders, I've, I've watched him a lot, learned a lot from him, the way he's had to navigate all of these types of issues in Harden Valley. It seems like every time a development, or rather, a parcel is rezoned in Harden Valley, commission has to end up tweaking the density level of the zoning. And I, I know this is not the last time this is going to happen in the Eighth District. There's a delicate triangle that has to be balanced in the Eighth District. Commissioner Anders spoke to this. In the Eighth District, there are really three things that, that most people desire. One is to improve our quality of life. Another is to not raise taxes. And the third one is to keep our way of life the same. Now, that might sound like a big oxymoron to a lot of people, but I get it. I understand it, because I was born and raised in the Eighth District, I live in the Eighth District, I've always lived in the Eighth District, I hope to die and be buried in the Eighth District. So I understand the, the way a lot of folks think out here. And here's, here's part of what has to happen with that. You know, if we're not going to raise taxes, we've got to have economic growth. And part of, part of having economic growth means we have to welcome a certain amount of development with certain caveats, certain restrictions, meaning we don't want density. We, 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 we don't want to be anti-development, but, but we don't want density. I, I say that to say, I, I disagree with, with the Planning Commission's zoning of five units per acre. I don't think it's appropriate for the area. I don't think that we're ready for it, as Kevin alluded to. I don't think we're ready for that kind of density with our, with our infrastructure. And I think a much larger conversation has got to happen, which, that's my responsibility, but I've, I've shared that with several people that have weighed in on this. Adam, Lisa Starbuck, Kevin, there's a much larger conversation that's got to come out of this. You know, and, and as I've tried to navigate this issue myself, knowing that I would probably be the one to look to for a motion, my, man, my position on this has evolved from a month ago to a week ago to a day ago to today, as I've processed through all the information. And I felt like I probably would leave this meeting not having made anybody happy. Because I think balance is, is important. Even though I disagree with five units per acre, and I, and I don't like the fact we don't have a representative on the Planning Commission, we do have a Planning Commission for a reason. And they have, they have zoned not only this, but several parcels in the area at five units per acre, and there are even a couple of parcels zoned even more dense than that. And build out aside, the zoning, which is our responsibility, is at four units per acre in a number of developments. As far as precedent goes, my hope is that the precedent this will set will go in the opposite direction from five units per acre, and not be something that we necessarily have to replicate, but a direction that we want, that we want to set. Let's, I want to talk about, and I'm going to wrap this up, but I want to talk about just sheer numbers of units, because, because that's really what's at issue here. How many houses? As Adam said, we know development's coming. The question is, how many houses is it going to be? Well, based on the acreage, and based on what the Planning Commission approved, Mr. Davis could have put, if my math is correct, two-hundred-and-fifteen houses on this parcel. Now, a lot of us out in the community would like to see that cut down to about a hundred and fifty. You know, that's sixty houses, that's, that's a very significant reduction. I learned this afternoon, when I got Mr. Snowden's email, that the developer has actually voluntarily reduced that by thirty houses. I think thirty-one was the exact calculation that, that I came up with. That's a significant reduction, too. And though it's not necessarily my preference, I think based on the fact that most of the parcels around this one are zoned at four units per acre, and there are several units, or rather, parcels in the area, especially on the other side of Emery Road, they're actually zoned at five units per acre. I think it, I think it's a reasonable concession. And, you know, as, as much as I love my, my neighborhood and my neighbors, I, I don't want to send a message that we're a developer's willing to concede that we're not. You know, so the motion I'm going to make, although I'll take heat from it, is to approve this at a density of four-point-two-five units per acre. And I'll yield to a second if there is one.
Okay, there's a motion onto floor from Commissioner Beeler, is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, I, I heard, that was a little quiet, Brad. But there's a second from Commissioner Anders, so we have a motion from Commissioner Beeler and a second from Commissioner Anders to approve this. As I heard, I'm going to restate it, I think you said four-point-two-five, is that correct, Commissioner Beeler? Nodded in agreement. Okay, is there, let me pull up my participant chart here, all right. Other, I've got Commissioner Gill and then Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Gill, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to hear from the opposition at four-point-two-five units per acre, please.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, you're, you're recognized via Commissioner Gill.
Would it be possible for me to divert to Kevin?
Of, of course, yeah, Kevin, Mr. Murphy.
All right, thank you. Yeah, quite honestly, I think the community's position was, you know, this development is a little bit too soon. And, you know, this is one where, when Mayor Jacobs was talking about growth plans a few months ago in some of the meetings, he stated that, you know, some, sometimes we'll actually have to, we'll find a development that's a little bit, you know, ahead of the infrastructure and the build-out. And, you know, we may need to, you know, pause that one. This is one where we really do want a, you know, small area plan, and, you know, some action from commission to actually say, how are we going to implement, you know, building this community out some? So, you know, that was, you know, really where the community started, and going up to three and a half units an acre is, you know, a compromise to, you know, okay, we'll try and, you know, do more of the same. Four-point-two-five, is it a little bit more? And, you know, it sends a bit of a signal. You know, you, you are talking about thirty houses, so, you know, the, the transit numbers are kind of small, but there's a lot of developable land still out in that area that, you know, if you add that on it, increased density, that's where the impacts come. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Commissioner Gill, does you have any follow-up? Okay, no, okay, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Looking at the growth plan, all the growth plan land is, is a strip that runs along the corridor between Gibbs and Halls. A majority of the land in the Corrington and Gibbs area is in the, in the rural designation, which is going to be limited to two to three units an acre if it is ever developed, once the sewer system, if sewer comes along. We have to be very useful and rational and utilize what land we do have in the planned growth area. I, I think Beeler's proposal is, is a good idea. That community has received structure improvements and, and, and schools. I, I, I'm going to be able to support this, I believe.
Okay, all right, is there anybody, I'm looking for any other hands. I'll, I'll weigh on this one, I'll tell you what, what has been my struggle bus on this one as a commissioner, is, you know, I'm on the record on multiple zonings, is saying, yeah, I'm in favor of density adjacent to school areas. And when you pull this up, frankly, on the Google Maps, and you see how close you are to the, the school core right there, it, that's a real, and that it's in the planned growth area, that, that's kind of a, a, a challenge I have on this one. Then hearing also, you know, from the schools that, you know, the, they're, they're not completely tapped out, and that the data suggests that the road is not as dangerous as I saw in some of the emails that I, I read. I mean, that, that's kind of where, I mean, I could, you know, I probably would have preferred to see this at four than four-point-two, but this is something I could probably live with myself. But mainly just because I've been consistent in voting for things when we have a, a density option that's really, really close. Though I can't quite say, say a stone's throw, but it's, it, it's really close to a school area. And, you know, that's where I've str, I mean, it's, where else would you have density? And that, that's, that's kind of where, where I've been, and I've been pretty consistent about that over the years. So, Commissioner Smith, your light is still on? If you wanted to weigh in there, okay. Commissioner Be, Commissioner Beeler, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that, and I meant to say this in my remarks, I would have preferred four as well. I agree with you on that, but, you know, I got my calculator out, and the difference was nine houses. And I understand you've got to stop somewhere, but I just felt like it was a good faith gesture by the developer to, to come from five down to four-point-two-five, or four, whatever his number was. And I was willing to make that concession.
Okay. All right, I'm looking, and, and to my fellow commissioners, I always look over at the participant chart, I don't necessarily look at you if you raise your hand. And I'm not seeing any other hands raised, at least on our digital. All right, all right, back to, yeah, Commissioner Gill, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask Commissioner Beeler, what were some of the community's concerns regarding the development in this area?
Commissioner, I think you've heard most of them, I think Mr. Thompson and Mr. Murphy articulated it pretty well. But, but I think the, the biggest one was probably the roads and Thompson School Road being But, but I think the, the biggest one was probably um the roads and Thompson School Road being um. The, the route that the county's looking at while residents might prefer to take Carnes Road and Barker Road, which are much more narrow. And uh, and maybe not as well equipped, certainly not equipped to, to handle much traffic. Uh, I will say this, I mean, uh, I, I could walk those roads blindfolded. I've lived here all my life. And uh, they're right. Carnes Road is not a good road for, for uh commuting, and neither is Barker Road. However, I think the traffic signal at Emery Road, the realignment of Fairview and Thompson School is going to make a significant difference. In people's desire to take that route, and I think you will see more people taking that route uh once that project is done, which should not be long.
Is uh, as a follow-up to that statement, uh, Commissioner Beeler, uh, and I'm looking to Jim Snowden, I guess that'd be community-based, but would a traffic calming uh thing for Carnes Road be appropriate? Uh, you know, if, if they want to reduce the traffic. I know usually I have to have a certain number of residents vote on that kind of stuff, but uh. Speed bumps or something. Um, I mean, I know it's a tiny road. It's a pig road or something, I think I read was, but uh. Would that be appropriate for such a small road to increase the discouragement and to try to do a more aggressive job to direct the traffic to the other route? Uh, Mr. Snowden?
Uh, yes, Chairman. W- we can look at that. Typically, uh, those roads that do cut through and, and you know, carry through traffic, we try to avoid. Uh, traffic coming on just because of the uh, you know, the, the use of emergency vehicles, but that is something that we can certainly look at and consider should the problem present itself.
Okay. Okay, I thought I saw another light come up. Let me see if there's anybody. I don't want to miss. Okay, all right, okay, Commissioner Bussler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having lived in the Powell area and the Halls area for over fifty years. I've seen development when Emery Road was just a two-lane. But improvements in infrastructure and anything else only comes when there is a demand for it and a need for it. Uh, I don't thi- I think five is way too many. If you look back at the property that we've used in, in the area that I represent. We may not have utilized it to its most usable, but it's been between the communities and the developers to reach a compromise. And they're right at about four, four point two five, and it says zoning. And has the uh plan been presented to, Mr. Green, has the plan been presented to you yet, how the subdivision will be laid out?
Yes, sir, they have presented it, and as I, both Mr. Davis and uh. Mr. Stevens said it's about four point two two units an acre, about a hundred and eighty-five units in the post development.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, the Chair, Mr. Thompson would like to speak. Chair recognizes you.
Oh, thank you. Um, no, I just, as Mr. Beeler brought up earlier, um, a possible postponement because um. This may be completely different uh with the, you know, with, with the community in the room. Um, because obviously it is, it is just me, it's a Zoom meeting. Um, because there, there was strong opposition to this. Um, and I think, you know, if, if it was set at four, obviously the other. Properties have been rezoned to that. Um, but uh, I think, I think your all's opinions might be a little bit different if, if you could see just in person how much uh opposition there was to this.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Daley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Thompson is, is uh, his thoughts are the same as mine. I sent you an email today along with the law department that uh. Anyone in opposition, we should defer to me, so the opposition could come and we could see them face to face, but that's. I like the four number uh along with all the others that's surrounding it. Uh, I feel comfortable at four, but I'm not sure at four point two two or four point two five, but you know, I agree with Mr. Thompson. I believe it should have been heard in front of the whole zoning board in the month of May.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Daley. Uh, okay, we've got Commissioner Biggs and then uh Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Um, just a couple of things. Number one, are we sure we're meeting in May? I feel like, uh, given the circumstances, things change rapidly. Um, maybe we'll be back on Zoom and then you have to worry about vacations and things of that nature. Will people be here, be able to be in person to actually have some rebuttal? Um, also, I've driven this parcel multiple times as well, and looking at it, they are correct. Carnes is a, a very uh narrow path. Um, I wouldn't even really call it a road, but there are some great things that have been happening out in the Gibbs, Halls area in the seventh and eighth district. Also, there's some talks. Um, we had a meeting, I'm not, I think Mr. Thompson may have actually been there. At Gibbs High School, where we're talking about putting in a bridge, an overhead bridge to accommodate the students from walking to Gibbs Elementary over to Gibbs High, Gibbs Middle and things like that. So I don't want uh Mr. Thompson or Mr. Murphy to feel like we're just going to approve this and there it is, nothing's going to happen. Uh, as Richie Beeler, I would say, would say that, that I feel like Gibbs is kind of God's country. It's beautiful out there. And I don't want anybody to think that we're not going to uh take this opportunity to take these zoning serious. Um, just like we're doing in Commissioner Anders' district in the Harden Valley area. So I think four point two five is a number that I feel like Mr. Davis has came to, um, and giving up um. A lot of, I guess you could say, I, I mean, it's eating in his profit, you know, and uh coming to four point two five, I feel like is a. Agree, agreed upon, and that's why I'll be voting yes on this one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Biggs. Uh, moving, or Commissioner Biggs, uh, moving on to Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you know, my concern is to make sure that the voice of the public. Um, and I know this pandemic is, is, is just an extraordinary set of circumstances. But the opposition is well represented by your two um, uh, by uh Mr. Adams and, and, and Kevin on Zoom. But I'm sure that the level of opposition from the community. Um, and their voices, based on the opposition and the information that was sent, um, probably has not been captured to the extent. And I just want to say that part of this process, what is missing is the public. And we just need to make sure that we echo the sentiments of the public and the opposition that is present for this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Gill. Uh, Commissioner Biggs, your hand is still up on the uh digital uh hand chart. Uh, did anybody come back to you? Okay, Mr. Thompson, your blue hand is still up. Did you need me to come back to you?
Um, no, you don't necessarily need to, but um, I mean, if we, we initially came at it at three and a half, I mean, we, we'd certainly be willing to compromise at four. If that, if that would help. Um, but I, because I, I think due to this probably, I'm not, I'm not sure, uh, Mr. Davis's reasons for um coming off it. Cause he hadn't reached out to us. He hadn't talked to us uh any at all, so I'm not sure what his reasoning was for, for dropping to the four point two two uh on his own. Um, but um, but I know that there's, there's a wetter part of this property that may not be able to be developed anyway. Um, so I didn't know if, um, you know, if we could get this rezoned to four um to match the surrounding uh properties, that would be, that would be fantastic. We'd, we'd greatly appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh, I'll see if I've got any other lights on over this. Okay, Commissioner Smith? Commit. All right, is there any other uh discussion on this particular item? All right, it was, uh, this item was before, before us with a, uh, the motion was made by Commissioner uh Daley. The second was made by Commissioner Anders, and the uh motion to restate it was to approve it for four point two five. Uh, units per acre, just to be perfectly clear. That is the motion that is on the floor. I know it's been a little bit.
It was Beeler and Anders.
Excuse me, Beeler and Anders, that is, I'm sorry, that's what I meant to say, but it didn't come out right, so. Uh, and Commissioners can make your light came on just for a half second ago, uh, but that's the motion that's before. See, Commissioner Skunmaker?
Sorry, Josh. I just want to correct, made the motion that the sitting commissioner from that district made the motion for the four point two five units per acre.
Correct, yeah. And the second was from Commissioner Anders, correct? All right. Okay, so that is what we're voting on. So uh, Madam Clerk, would you please uh call the roll? For a roll call vote?
Starting in first district, Commissioner Gill.
No.
Commissioner Gill votes no. Commissioner Carringer?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Carringer, can't quite hear you. Can anybody, is it me? Can y'all hear Commissioner Carringer?
I think you're muted.
It looks like her bike is muted.
Michelle pushed the unmute button.
There you go.
No, I was doing the, the spacebar. Anyway, yes.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nystrom? Commissioner Nystrom?
I think he's frozen.
It's the first time I've heard.
I'll go ahead and go back to Commissioner Nystrom. Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Yes.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bussler?
Yes.
Commissioner Bussler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
No.
Commissioner Daley votes no. Commissioner J?
Aye.
Commissioner J votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Nystrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nystrom votes aye. We have nine aye and two no.
All right, it uh passes. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Welcome.
By the way, to my fellow commissioners, occasionally I've had a couple of internet loops, so if I drop out of the meeting, I'll be right back in. Uh, thank you to everyone. Uh, and Mr. Davis, please work with the neighborhood. Uh, all right, Madam Clerk.
Go for your time.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is number forty-three, two dash H dash two zero dash RZ. It's a request of Ben Mullins, OBO Gregory Jones and Stephen Ausley for rezoning from a agricultural to PR plan residential zone. Up to one dwelling per acre located at four nine three seven Y Springs Road, parcel ID four zero one three three, Commission District Eight.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The planning commission by a vote of eleven to zero recommended approval of the PR zoning. With the density of up to one dwelling unit an acre for this forty-two acre parcel, because it is consistent with the Northeast County Sector Plan. For agricultural and hillside protection overlay, and is consistent with the slump analysis for the property.
Very good. Uh, thank you, Mr. Green. Is the applicant present?
I am. Ben Mullins, five fifty West Main Street, Suite five hundred.
All right, thank you. Is there, have we received any opposition to this one? Okay, no opposition present. And Drusilla, for the record, did we receive any emails in opposition to this one?
None so far.
Okay. All right, very good. Um, I'll go back to the applicant as I do in most meetings. Can you give us kind of a twenty-second, thirty-second overview of what you're proposing?
I'd, I'd be glad to. This is a forty-two acre parcel that is just south of the, the Knox County Detention Facility. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the owners who have had this property marketed for sale. Uh, we are seeking to change the zoning to planned residential at one dwelling unit an acre. Uh, from the agricultural zone uh to help improve the marketability of the property uh to allow more flexibility in what. Uh, can go on the property uh without increasing the uh, the density. Uh, there have been, uh, there's a potential for a residential group home that is doing its due diligence on the property. And the planned residential zone would allow for that use and allow for flexibility in the design of that facility as well. So we're asking that you approve the uh rezoning request uh per the planning commission's recommendation.
All right, thank you. Uh, the, the Chair will look for a uh motion on this particular item.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve per the planning commission's recommendation.
All right, second, Justin Biggs.
Okay, we have a second uh, a motion from Commissioner Beeler with a second for Commissioner Biggs to approve per the uh planning commission's recommendations. Uh, that's the motion on the floor. Is there uh, look, is there any additional discussion? Not seeing any hands. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll call vote?
Starting in District Two, Commissioner Carringer.
Yes.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nystrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nystrom votes aye. Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bussler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bussler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner J? Commissioner J votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. All members present voting aye.
All right, very good. It passes. Uh, Madam Clerk, next item?
The next item is number forty-four, twelve dash A dash nineteen dash S P. Request of Joseph and Rebecca Longmire for Northeast County Sector Plan Amendment from S F R, Single Family Residential. And A G F O R V A C, Agricultural Forestry Vacant to R R Rural Residential. Properties located at nine nine zero one East Emery Road and nine eight five three East Emery Road. Parcel ID one five zero zero four and zero zero four zero one, Commission District Eight.
All right, uh, very good. Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Mr. Green, would you please uh? Tell us what's going on here?
Do you like to see if the applicant is present?
Well, I bet she is. Uh, the applicant is a well-known uh former uh planning commissioner from that particular district. Some might, some might argue legendary. So, uh, and we're delighted to finally have this item, I think, before. So uh, the applicant I do see is present. I heard her laugh. So uh, but well, uh, the applicant is present and uh, is there any opposition? And uh, Madam Clerk, have we received any emails in opposition to the applicant's request?
No, we have not so far.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Green, you could, uh, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The planning commission by unanimous vote of thirteen to zero. Recommended to adopt the uh, or to approve the amendment of the Northeast County Sector Plan to Low Density Residential for this one point five four acre parcel. Due to the change of conditions in the development of the area and to be consistent with the existing development pattern.
All right, very good. All right, uh. App, this, uh, the Chair will look for a uh motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, with the permission of Mr. Beeler, I'd like to make a motion to approve per M C, MPC recommendations or Knox Planning Recommendations.
Say that motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner J with a second from Commissioner Beeler, uh, with the uh applicant like to uh saying, and then I'll quickly get to Mr. Smith. But uh, would the applicant like to uh say a little bit about what you're doing, Ms. Longmire?
What we're trying to do is to uh make the, the two plots which are deed so that we can plat them. The uh current zoning uh and the current situation was done in the early sixties. And in order to do a plat, we need to change it to low-density residential.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a couple of questions about this, because it's uh not in the planned growth area. Director Green, what was the staff's reasons for denial of this?
The uh, the request came for a rural residential, and that's not permitted in the uh. Strangely enough, in the rural area, the low-density residential is, and the uh planning commission saw this and allowed the uh low-density residential designation, land use designation. So we are, we're trying to recognize the development pattern and the current situation and have maneuver within the uh. Dictates of the growth policy plan.
Okay, and there's, there's no sewer in that area? Okay, and there's, there's no sewer in that area, and these, both of these lots are within less than an acre. How is it possible to deed property without plating it?
And again, as Ms. Longmire stated, this is conditioned from probably the nineteen sixties, and I can't answer. I can only speculate that the deed was accepted at one point without a review of any plat or any subject. It was just sold by deed or transferred by deed as opposed to any plat being surveyed for and approved.
Okay, and I, I want to make sure we're not doing two things. Uh, one, this would not be considered a spot zoning, and two, this is in the area outside the urban growth plan. Would this in any way set a precedent in that area and possibly bring in a development higher than it is currently being developed?
We look at every application on a case-by-case basis and the situation and unique circumstances of that application, so I don't see it setting a precedent. Although the planning staff did, uh, discuss this for some time, actually, felt that it, as part of the next sector plan for this area, a closer look needed to be taken at the, uh, Emery Road area, even into this section of Emery Road to, uh, look at the current development pattern and the opportunity for development and see if a different designation and zoning would be appropriate on a larger scale.
And, and one last question. I noticed in reading through the packet that the, uh, MPC attorney, attorney recused himself. Is that because of, uh, Ms. Longmire's past relationship with him?
I can't remember what he stated the reason was, but it may have been some attorney-client conflict or because of friendship or some item which the, the attorney considered were prejudice, his, uh, opinion, although he does not vote. He, he felt that it would be better not to be part of this conversation.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Smith. Commissioner Beeler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Smith's question about the, the plat there. Just from my years in the registered deeds, years ago, there, there were a number of parcels that were divided without plats. It was prior to the law requiring that.
Alright, thank you. Uh, alright, Commissioner Smith, your light is still on. Do you have any follow-up? Alright, very good. Are there any, uh, additional questions or follow-up? Okay, this motion is properly before us. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please lead a roll call vote?
Starting in District Three, Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nystrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nystrom votes aye. Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Alright, very good. Thank you. It passes. Uh, Madam Clerk, next item, uh, related to this one?
Yes, item number forty-five, twelve dash A dash nineteen dash RZ. It's also a request of Joseph and Rebecca Longmire. This one is for rezoning from A Agricultural to PR Plan Residential located at nine nine zero one East Emery Road and nine eight five three East Emery Road. Parcel ID one five zero zero four and zero zero four zero one, Commission District Eight.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. By a vote of thirteen to zero, the Planning Commission recommended approval of RA low-density zoning, which it would allow development at two dwelling units per acre.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Green. Uh, would the applicant like to, uh, I think we've just talked about this one pretty, a lot, but, uh, Becky, if you'd like to add any, uh, final thirty seconds on this?
Uh, no, I appreciate your all's discussion, and again, it's simply so that we can plant property that was not planted in a, a time when things were a little bit different. But I appreciate your discussions. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, the Chair will entertain a motion on this item?
Move to approve per Knox Planning.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion from Commissioner Jay and a second from Commissioner Beeler. Uh, any additional discussion? Seeing no lights on the Chair, ask the, uh, county clerk to please lead a roll call vote.
Beginning in District Four, Commissioner Nystrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nystrom votes aye. Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Okay, uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. It passes. Uh, next item?
Number forty-six is three dash A dash two zero dash SP. It's a request of Gerald Green, Knoxville, Knox County Planning, for Southwest County Sector Plan Amendment from OS Open Space to LDR Low Density Residential. Properties located at nine one three Geddes View Drive, parcel ID one four four BA zero four nine, Commission District Five.
Alright, thank you. Uh, really excited to ask this question. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir, he is.
Okay, very good. Uh, with the, uh, is there any opposition? Okay, uh, Mr. Green, if you could kind of, uh, tell us what's going on here, please?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. First of all, background before I give you the vote. This property is part of the Geddes View Development, and the, uh, Southwest, uh, County Sector Plan of, of early two thousands. It was included as part of the golf course, and the sector plan designation is open space. That was a mistake. And the sector plan was two thousand and five, actually. And no one realized it apparently until the owner asked about potential development of this property, and it was discovered that it was designated as open space. And again, that was a mistake in the sector plan in the, in two thousand and five. The zoning allows the development, it's planned residential zoning, but the sector plan designation was incorrectly applied in two thousand and five. The request before you is to correct that mistake, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the, uh, amendment to the Southwest County Sector Plan to LDR for this property by a vote of eleven to zero due to that staff error when the, uh, sector plan was comprehensively updated in two thousand and five.
Alright, thank you, uh, Mr. Green. Uh, once again, I'll ask in case someone has come in, is there anyone up in opposition to this? And Drusilla, have we received any, uh, email correspondence, uh, in opposition to this?
None so far.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll, um, look to, uh, Commissioner Schoonmaker for a motion. I do have one question, though. Is it possible to insert language that will allow fourteen-year-old boys to fish on to Geddes View ponds if we pass this?
Only if that applies to old men, too.
Okay, I'm, that's, I'm just kidding. So.
They have a fishing license issued by TWRA?
I think he does. I think he does. So, uh, okay, uh, Commissioner Schoonmaker, I'll look to you for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to approve per Planning Commission recommendation.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second from Commissioner Daley. Okay, that motion is properly before us. Uh, I'm not seeing any additional, uh, questions on that. So, uh, Madam Clerk, would you please lead a roll call vote?
Starting in District Five, Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nystrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nystrom votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Alright, thank you. It passes. Thank you for that bit of housekeeping, Mr. Green, on that item. So, uh, okay, next item, Madam Clerk?
Item number forty-seven, three dash A dash two zero dash RZ. It's a request of Joel Do for rezoning from A Agricultural to RA Low Density Residential zoning located at one six eight Overton Lane, parcel ID five seven zero two three, Commission District Seven.
Alright, thank you. Uh, is the applicant present?
Yes, I am.
Okay, very good. Uh, is there any opposition? Uh, Drusilla, have we received any communication at all, uh, about any opposition to this item?
No, none so far.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. The Planning Commission by a vote of eleven to zero recommended approval of RA Low Density Residential zoning for this one point five acre parcel because it's consistent with the North County Sector Plan's Low Density Residential Land Use Designation for the property.
Okay, very good. Alright, the, uh, the Chair will look for a, uh, a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we zone this to, uh, RA as per, uh, suggested by the Planning Commission.
Second. I think the Commissioner has frozen.
You know, every time I talk, he just goes quiet.
But I did second. He's such a cool cat, he freezes. Maybe the dog messed with the internet. He always has the same.
It's gotta be a joke.
I know, I'm sorry about that. It's like right when they're making a motion. I thank everybody in my neighborhood. It's back to the Comcast question from earlier in the meeting. You know, everybody's getting on the internet at the same time in my neighborhood. Uh, but the, uh, motion was made by Commissioner Bustler. Who made the, uh, second?
I did.
Okay, and there's a, uh, second from Commissioner Schoonmaker. Is there, uh, any additional discussion on this particular item? Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, would you please, uh, call a roll call vote? The motion is properly before us.
Starting in District Six, Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nystrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nystrom votes aye. Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Alright, thank you. Uh, it passes, and, uh, good luck, Mr. Do, on your project. So.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Madam Clerk, uh, next item, please?
Item number forty-eight, three dash B dash two zero dash RZ. It's a request of Diane Tudor for rezoning from PR Plan Residential to A Agricultural. The property is located at three two 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 Weaver Cemetery Road, parcel ID two seven two four four, Commission District Seven.
Okay, very good. Alright, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay, I see you there. Okay, is there any opposition present? Okay, uh, Drusilla, have we received any, uh, comments, emails, anything about in opposition to this development?
No, none so far.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. A vote of eleven to zero, the Planning Commission, on the consent agenda, the, uh, Planning Commission recommended approval of the agricultural zoning for this fourteen point nine acre parcel because it is consistent with the North County Sector Plan designation for the property.
Alright, thank you. Uh, the applicant would like to give us a twenty-second version of what they're planning?
I'm just having a little farm up there and being able to have my horses on it.
Alright, sounds good. Anybody who would be against that would probably be a naysayer. Is that correct? Sorry about that. You were, you were caught in a crossfire there. So, um, well, uh, the, uh, the Chair will look for a, uh, a motion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the zoning from PR to agricultural so she can have her horses on there. Diane's taken a long time for you to get that done, hasn't it?
Yes, it has, sir. Second that for, uh, Diane. Thank you, Michelle.
Alright, we have a proper, proper motion and a second before us. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you, uh, please, uh, lead a roll call vote on this item?
Starting in District Seven, Commissioner Bustler?
Yes.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nystrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nystrom votes aye. Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Alright, thank you. It passes. Uh, Madam Clerk, next, um, item, please?
Item.
Alright, so, uh, apologies. Uh, Commissioner Smith, your light is on. Okay, he waves it off. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item?
Item number forty-nine, three dash C dash two zero dash RZ. It's a request of Weston Odell for rezoning from A Agricultural to PR Plan Residential zoning up to three dwelling units per acre. The property is located at one four one three Tipton Station Road, parcel ID one three seven zero five three, Commission District Nine.
Alright, thank you. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I'm here.
Alright, thank you, sir. And, uh, is there any opposition, Madam Clerk? Have you had anybody, uh, express any, uh, challenge with this item? I recognize Commissioner Daley. Okay. Alright, uh, oh, Commissioner Daley said he was, uh, in opposition to this one. Maybe he's maybe he's trying to throw you under the bus. If you're good at it, change the oil. So, um, okay, no opposition from that, uh, Drusilla?
No, none so far.
Okay, no documented opposition. Okay, uh, Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. The Planning Commission by a vote of eleven to zero on the consent agenda recommended approval of the planned residential zoning for this twenty-eight point five acre parcel and a density of up to three dwelling units an acre, finding it's, the zoning would be consistent with the South County Sector Plan designation of low-density residential for the property.
Okay, very good. Uh, the applicant could give us just a, uh, the twenty-second version here of what you're planning?
Sure, uh, we're planning on a, uh, an assisted living with memory care, um, facility, uh, about seventy-one beds. Uh, we currently only have one other facility, uh, on Boyd's Creek Highway, so we're not a big corporation. Um, and we're gonna put some small independent living duplexes, uh, around the assisted living to kind of serve that community, because the only one really in all of South Knoxville is Williamsburg Villas on closer to Alcoa Highway. So, that's the quick overview.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, the Chair recognizes Commissioner Daley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Mr. Odell for coming out to the homeowners group. Not only that, he's going to save a lot of trees. He's gonna do parks, some walking areas for the residents there. And the, uh, the homeowners groups were, are, is on a board with this. They think it's a great program, or a great great for a site for this project there at Johnson Beer and Tipton Station. So, I want to make a motion to approve per KK KP's, uh, recommendation.
Second.
Alright, thank you. We have a, uh, proper motion from Commissioner Daley with a second from Commissioner Gill. Uh, any additional discussion?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, would you please lead a roll call vote? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
I said this was a good location for Brad because he's, uh, getting into those older systems, too.
I, I totally agree with you, Commissioner Bustler. He can, uh, go over there and they'll try to keep him from getting lost. So, um, alright, Madam Clerk, would you please lead the, uh, roll call vote?
Starting in the eighth district, Commissioner Beeler?
Aye, and saved me a room, too, Weston.
Yeah, 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 well, we're.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley? Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner J?
Aye.
Commissioner J votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nystrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nystrom votes aye. Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. All members present voting aye.
All right, looks like it passes. Mr. Odell, you know, we might have to send out an announcement from the Commission Office if you have this many commissioners moving there in a few years as a we wouldn't want to violate the sunshine law. So, but good luck on your project. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah. All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number fifty, three dash F dash two zero dash RZ is a request of Ralph Smith, Professional Land Systems, for rezoning from A agricultural to RA low-density residential zoning. The property is located at four seven zero eight Messer Lane, parcel ID zero seven eight one one two zero four four seven hundred Messer Lane, parcel ID zero seven eight one 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 and zero Messer Lane, parcel ID zero seven eight one one zero, Commission District six.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I am.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there any opposition and present? Okay, Driscilla, have we received any correspondence whatsoever about anyone in opposition to this development?
No, not so far.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Green?
Thank you. By consent vote of eleven point eleven to zero, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the RA low-density residential zoning for this two acre parcel because it is consistent with the North County Sector Plan and is compatible with the surrounding land uses.
All right, thank you. Could the Chair get a motion, please?
Like to make a motion to approve per Knox Planning.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Anders and a second from Commissioner Beeler. Okay, Madam Clerk, please lead a roll call vote.
Starting in District nine, Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner J?
Aye.
Commissioner J votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nystrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nystrom votes aye. Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. All members present voting aye.
All right, thank you. It passes. Madam Clerk and good luck, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is number fifty-one, three dash I dash two zero dash RZ is a request of Scott Davis, Basana Investments LLC, for rezoning from A agricultural to PR Plan Residential zoning up to five dwelling units per acre. The property is located at eight six one South Gallagher View Road and oh, zero Westland Drive, parcel ID one three three zero three one point zero one and zero three one point zero two, Commission District five.
Okay, is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition to this item? Okay, Driscilla, have you received any correspondence, any emails, any calls, anything of anyone who is in opposition to this development?
No, not so far.
Okay, all right, Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The Planning Commission voted eleven to zero to recommend approval of the planned residential zoning for this six point five acre parcel with a density of up to five dwelling units an acre because the zoning would be consistent with the sector plan's low-density residential development and also would be compatible with the surrounding development pattern.
All right, thank you. Mr. Davis, if you could give us the twenty-second version here?
I appreciate your all's time and service and respectfully approve the MPC's recommendation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The Chair will look for a recommendation or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have just a quick question.
Sure.
Has Mr. Davis, have you made a determination what the density will be for this development?
Yes, sir, we've done a preliminary layout and actually, I mean, the where it's located, I mean, ideally, we would like to have higher than five units an acre because we can get the density there, but we can live with the five units an acre.
Okay, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve per planning for per Knox Planning for PR zoning it up to five dwelling units per acre.
Second, Carringer.
All right, thank you. We have a motion, a proper motion, and a second before us. Madam Clerk, would you please lead a roll call vote?
Starting in seat ten at large, Commissioner J?
Yes.
Commissioner J votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nystrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nystrom votes aye. Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Very good, thank you. It passes. And for those of you who thought we were at the end of the agenda, I might remind you that at the very beginning, we did have one applicant who was not present. And I'm pleased to announce that the applicant is present for our meeting right now, I do believe. So, I'll go ahead since I've started and just call this one out. This was item forty-one, two dash A dash twenty dash RZ, request of Joseph Novkov and Steve Lentz for rezoning from A agriculture to RA low-density residential property located at thirty-four seventeen Stamp Lane slash parcel ID five six P A zero one two oh one, Commission District seven. Planning Commission recommendation approve RA low-density residential zoning by vote of eleven oh on the consent agenda. So, to confirm the applicant is present? Oh, you in there? So, you may want to turn on your microphone if you can hear me.
Yeah, yes, I'm present.
Okay, Steve, thank you. Is there any opposition? Okay, Driscilla, have we received any communication on this one, any emails and counter to it?
No, not so far.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Green?
Very quickly, as you stated, Mr. Chairman, the Planning Commission voted eleven to zero on the consent agenda to recommend RA low-density residential zoning for this one acre parcel, finding it would be consistent with the low-density residential sector plan designation.
All right, very good. Sir, if you could, Mr. Lentz, could you give us the twenty-second version of what you're planning?
Yes, we're just hoping to subdivide the acre into three parcels to put three units there.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, if I could get a motion, please?
Like to make a motion that we rezon this to the low-density residential as per Planning Commission.
All right, thank you, Mr. Who was the second?
Commissioner Anders.
Okay, Commissioner Anders. Okay, we have a proper motion and a second before us. Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll call vote?
Starting at seat eleven at large, Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nystrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nystrom votes aye. Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner J?
Aye.
Commissioner J votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Good, it passes. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item?
Um, the next item is number fifty-two, but it was withdrawn.
Yep.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
We voted on it. We confirmed a withdrawal when we set the agenda.
Okay. Item number fifty-three, ordinance O dash two zero dash four dash one zero one is amended in Knox County Code Appendix A zoning, Article three, Section three point five zero, off-street parking requirements to allow a parking study to be submitted and approved as a basis for reducing the minimum number of off-street parking spaces. Ordinance O dash nine zero dash nine dash one three zero adopted September tenth nineteen ninety as amended. This is on first reading.
Very good. Look to Commissioner Beeler to make a motion on this one.
Make a motion that we approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Beeler with a second from Commissioner Daley. Mr. Green, could you just, I keep calling this one to kind of the Dollar General fix one, but if you wanted to, for the benefit of the public, before we vote on this one, could you kind of share a little bit on this one and if any of the other Commissioners? I think Commissioner Beeler, you spoke about this a little bit at the work session as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is brought before you based not only on the Dollar General but on other developments which had to meet pretty demanding parking requirements under our ordinance, which was developed at a time when the parking standards were much higher than we currently see in commercial development. The current standards require a great deal of land and cost for development and are unrealistic. We find developments which have parking areas that are underused. This ordinance would allow a parking study to be done to justify the reduction in parking. That parking study would be approved by Engineering and Public Works and then the development could proceed without going through the Board of Zoning Appeals. We feel this is a much better approach to the situation than going through the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the Planning Commission voted to eleven to zero to recommend approval of the ordinance amendment.
We have a proper motion and a second before us. Excuse me, I'm seeing some folks to weigh in on this one. Sorry about that. I've been distracted. Driscilla just sent me a note. All right, so Commissioner Schoonmaker and then Smith. All right, Commissioner Schoonmaker, your light's now off. All right, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure we all understand this before we go further. As Director Green said, we had requirements that were requiring too much land to be used for parking. I want to just make sure we don't swing the pigeon on the other way too far, as government often does, and make sure that when we build these buildings and these parking lots that we realize that there may be a day in the future that there may be another use within that zoning. And I just want to make sure we're not limiting future uses of these spaces.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Smith. Is there any, oh, my computer just froze. All right. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Why does he always look exactly the same when he freezes?
I don't know, it's crazy.
And just to respond to Commissioner Smith's comment, I think that's a very good comment. In reviewing these parking studies, we'll look at not only the present use but others within the range, commercial range for commercial buildings and try to ensure that we're addressing not only the current situation but allowing free use of the property in the future.
All right, very good. My apologies, I got knocked off the internet for a half second there. Mr. Green, I heard you weighing in on that, but I also know Commissioner Daley would like to weigh in on this one.
Yeah, I believe also that we, if someone else moves in, you have to have a use on review, which they could ask for more or less parking spaces at that time, too. We also need to set a meeting, public meeting for the
For the eighteenth. We could do the vote, but then after the vote, we do need to set a public hearing for this one, which I think we had planned on having on the eighteenth of May. So, I'm sorry. Kim, hello?
Yes.
Okay. All right, sorry, I forgot, knocked off the internet there. Let me get everything back in order. Got my participants there. Okay, we had a proper motion and a second before us. Is there any additional discussion or clarification on this item? All right, Madam Clerk, could you lead a roll call vote, please?
Starting in District one, Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nystrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nystrom votes aye. Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner J?
Aye.
Commissioner J votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. All members present voting aye.
All right, very good. It passes. The Chair now recognizes Commissioner Smith and then we'll set the public hearing on this one for next month's meeting. Go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
Okay, since we are setting a meeting time here, God forbid, we have to meet by Zoom again next month, but today we ran into pension board running into beer board. If we do have to do this, and I think we're going to try to get an audit committee meeting in next month, that we should be very attentive to how much longer these meetings take on Zoom and set our schedules appropriately, our times.
We will. Historically, I think when we do these public hearings, do we not usually do them? Public hearing like this could be something, you know, our work session days, I know that Commissioner Schoonmaker, now we're working on trying to get a finance committee put in there. I'm wondering if something like this, knowing how these things tend to run late, if a public hearing like this might be better on, you know, basically on the eighteenth on a work session day, but there you have it either before the work session possibly, if we can get a transition out of there, that meeting before it, if we have a finance committee meeting possibly before then. So, Commissioner Smith, back to you. And then I've got a hand up, I think that must be Driscilla. All right, Commission Office hand is up. Is that you, Drew?
Yes, I was just going to tell you Jim Morrison has already scheduled May eighteenth for the Audit Committee at three to four thirty.
Okay, all right, yep, yep, yep. Okay, Commissioner Carringer?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Remember May, we move, are we doing with Memorial Day? Move them up a week, our meetings?
No, it will be on the
Twenty-sixth.
So, we're still going to be right there at the end of phase one with the COVID-nineteen.
Correct. I'll make it, we'll need to get this basically scheduled and I'll make a determination probably if we're going to be zooming or not zooming, you know, probably in the next week or so. But I'd almost say prepare for Zoom, but know that we might go live. I'll take a look at the pre-opening guidelines and see kind of where we fit in. But, you know, I guess we just really need to take a look at hard at what is going to be the best dates for it, you know, because we've got it, we're looking at nineteen, the eighteenth and or the twenty-sixth are two busy days and we've already got, it may be, you know, I want to make sure the public can get here. And if we try to do this before the Audit Committee, that would be really awkward, but we've never done a meeting like this before the Audit Committee.
I think you scheduled the Audit Committee meeting for a Wednesday.
True, once Jim got that Audit Committee meeting for, set down for us, did he put it on the twentieth?
I'm sorry, it's a Monday.
Yeah, yeah, the eighteenth.
It's the Monday, the eighteenth.
Yeah.
From three to four thirty.
That could be a catch-up meeting, too, because I think the last Audit Meeting was canceled. So, it will probably go right up to almost five o'clock. Maybe not, but it might.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
And Commissioner J, we have a Rules Committee meeting on the eighteenth, so who's on the Audit Committee?
I am.
So, you've got Rules Committee and Audit Committee, so we may have to change the Rules Committee. Commissioner Jay?
Yeah, we'll reschedule that then. I'll make a note of it.
Mr. Chairman, if we don't, why don't we roll this public hearing to June?
Well, is that going to impede the development? I might look to, I'll try to work with the folks who proposed it, I mean, and see if we can do that. But it it's going to be awkward as heck to get it in, crammed in on the eighteenth and or the twenty-sixth. But I also don't want to kind of block them because they've been working on trying to get this done for a long time, and we've already had to postpone it once. I'd rather, at the risk of having another late night, try to do it, the the public hearing on this, still in conjunction with one of our existing meetings. Probably, we could do it at, we could, it is possible for a public hearing if we want to have a little control on getting this done. Work sessions are different. We can close our work session, go into a public hearing at six o'clock, see if anybody shows up, and then come back to our work session. That might be the the best option, just to get this done and not go too late. That kind of passes the red face test to me. Anybody have a have a better idea? I'm going to go. I'm seeing John, Drew, and Randy's lights are lit up. So, John, you're you're back. All right.
Yeah, I'm good.
Driscilla?
I was just going to recommend after the work session on the eighteenth would probably be your better date.
Okay. All right, okay, Drew's recommending, and I just, I don't know how deep our agenda is going to be in May, if it's going to be a really late night or not. Commissioner Smith, then Daley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we very seldom have very long meetings for these hearings, public hearings. They usually last five minutes. I I think your ideal of six o'clock on the work session, recess the work session, and and go to that meeting would be would be good.
I think that's also fair for the public. Okay, back to you, Commissioner Daley.
Yeah, I agree with the eighteenth, and also I think we have to have a public meeting before we can even vote on it for final passages. So, we couldn't do it on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Or we could, but we'd have to do it before the meeting.
And that's going to, that could be a block with the Pension Committee before it. So, let's just, Driscilla, can you post, we'll have it start at six o'clock and on the eighteenth, just to get it done, because things are tending to run late. We're doing these Zoom and roll call votes. We'll have it start at six o'clock on the eighteenth. Wherever we are in the work session, we can go into recess, have the public hearing, and then come back to the and come back to the work session.
Okay, I'll make a note of it.
That seems fair for the commissioners and for the the public at large. Commissioner Daley, your light's still on, as yours is Commissioner Smith as well. All right, back to you, Commissioner Smith. All right.
I'm really bad about hitting that button.
Okay. Madam Clerk, has that got us through all of our business for tonight?
Yes, it has.
All right, any other final announcements or anything like that before we adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, accepted. We are adjourned.